... recommendation, but they said, get it resolved, let's see where we're at, come in before the end of the year, we'll start the process again, it's not the end of the world. They said, I don't see if we do deny it, it's going to be for anything other than, we don't know what's going to happen.
Right. At this... At this time, I'd like to call the Monday, July 14th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the roll call. Pitt here, Price.
Here.
Longton. Hema.
Here.
Ms. Charnell. Shoblam.
Here.
And Lundell.
Here.
That brings us to the next item, which is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
I've got a motion by Mr. Price and a second by Mr. Hema. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the approval of the minutes from the May 12th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting.
So moved.
I've got a motion by Mr. Price.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Hema. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to number five, which is public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. And Ms. Charnell is with us here?
Hi, sorry, I'm late. My car said I had three minutes.
It was the traffic.
It was the traffic.
Well, seeing nobody sitting in our chairs, we will move on to the recessed public hearing for the preliminary plat for Mulva Hill.
Just the, the single update on the continuation of the re... postponing the, the public hearing on the Phase Two preliminary plat for Glen Mulva Hill's development is, Goodyear County and Glen have not reached final agreements in terms of the land that will be required by Goodyear County on the east end of the plat for the extension of County 24 Boulevard. They said part of, part of the delay on that is, Mindot does need to approve the plans for this project, obviously intersecting or connecting to Highway 19. That hasn't happened yet, and I believe Goodyear County is still looking at the three alternatives that are shown on the wall back there in terms of alignment. I think we're getting very close in talking with the county engineer Greg Isaacson and talking with Glen. I'm, I'm hopeful that within the next month or two or three, that, that the two parties can get together and get this resolved. And as soon as that happens, then Glen will know exactly what changes to the Phase Two preliminary plat need to be made, at least on the east end of that development. And he may or may not come in with Phase Two preliminary plat being the balance of the 52 acres. He may make it smaller, he may not, I don't know yet. But until they get resolution with Goodyear County, there's no reason to go ahead with, with this plat. So I'm recommending we close the public hearing tonight, and then proceed to consideration of the resolution, which would deny the preliminary plat for Phase Two solely based on no agreement yet with, with Goodyear County on the, on the road right of way.
Does that have any impact then for Mr. Mulva Hill? He has to reopen the public hearing when he's ready?
Yes, he'll have to come back in, and I told him if we, if, if he comes back in this year with the revised Phase Two of the preliminary plat, we'll go ahead and, and schedule another public hearing, we'll, we'll issue notices again, we'll come back with, you know, Phase Two as we, as we did originally, and present whatever the, the revisions are, and just proceed, proceed from there. He knows that some of the issues in, in Phase Two that we hadn't finally resolved yet, sidewalks, parkland, you know, final roads, there were some, a couple of the lots that we had questions on, you know, what, what they might look like. Those things will need to address in the second phase of the preliminary plat anyway. But until we know how much additional land that the county's going to require for the road, it's, it's not really worthwhile for us to make those judgments right now, so. So we'll come back, and I think he's, he's fine with that.
How, how do we end up handling the fees and all the stuff that he has to provide us then?
Yeah, I was wondering that too.
Put on hold and then passed on, or?
Yeah, my-
We're not doubling up stuff on him, are we?
No, no. We're not incurring any costs right now, other than my time, which we don't reimburse for, so we've got no consultant on our behalf working with his dollar on the plat. That's, none of that's going on right now. We, we will continue to retain the escrow agreement from the original plat, and I've told him that if he comes back in this year, that my recommendation is that we not look for a, for another application fee for the second phase of the preliminary plat. I think that's fair, given that the reason for the delay really has nothing to do-
I don't think he could have controlled any of it at all.
Right, right.
So you don't need any motions or anything from us?
Just to close the public hearing, and then we'll consider the resolution thereafter.
Is that a motion to close the?
Yeah, a motion, a second to close.
A motion, motion to close the public hearing?
I've got a motion by Mr. Hema and a second by Mr. Price. All in favor to close the public hearing for the preliminary plat for Mulva Hill?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That concludes the recessed public hearing. And that brings us to the discussion items, and since we've already covered the preliminary plat for Mulva Hill, so that will bring us to Sandstone Ridge Development.
Dan, I do need a motion, a second, and a consideration of resolution number seven, yep.
All right, we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to... Cancel? What is it, cancel the?
Yeah, it's denying, yeah, resolution number seven will deny the plat because of the, the Goodyear County land issue.
So our, the motion is to deny the plat, right?
Deny.
Right.
I'll second that.
We had a motion and a second to deny the preliminary plat until Goodyear County's had a chance to get Mr. Mulva Hill what he needs. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the next discussion item, which is Stan's, Sandstone Ridge Development.
Sandstone Ridge.
That's a broad subject.
That is.
Give them the lights, thank you, Bill. Yeah, maybe, there we go. That should be good. Zero in on Sandstone, and I'm going to give a couple of graphics on the screen tonight that you didn't receive, just to kind of present kind of where we're at with the Stan, Sandstone Ridge Development. Recall last year, as I indicated in the, in the staff report, the Planning Commission recommended that, that property be rezoned to an urban reserve district. That recommendation went to the council, it was approved by the council, and so the forfeited land, as well as the land that was retained by the new owners of the property, has been rezoned to urban reserve. And the reason we did it at the time is, I guess we had conflicting viewpoints between the city of Cannon Falls and Goodyear County regarding the future intent of the county to sell individual lots through the forfeiture process. We objected to that because, for several reasons, not the least of which is that there still is a fair amount of delinquent assessments against that property. And our concern was, if those individual lots began to be resold one at a time, not only would it create some, some issues for us in terms of issuing building permits, but it would also affect the unpaid, the outstanding balance of the unpaid special assessments. So part of the reason for rezoning it to the urban reserve was kind of a defensive move to tell anyone who might have an interest in buying lots through the forfeiture process with Goodyear County that the likelihood was, was pretty strong that they would not be issued a building permit under the urban reserve zoning, and that in fact is exactly what happened. There were no lots sold in the forfeiture process. So from that point, following the rezoning to urban reserve, we ended up scheduling a, a meeting that we held a little over a month ago now, I guess, with, with the staff at Goodyear County and Commissioner Samuelson and the county attorney to represent from the city Cannon Falls perspective, our view about what should happen next with respect to solving this problem identified as, as Sandstone Ridge. And our position to the county staff was that we prefer to cooperate with the county, rather than continually disagreeing with the county in terms of their interest in selling those lots and creating more problems for us. And the county staff agreed after our conversation. So what they've done at Goodyear County is said, they, working with their economic development authority and ours, and our city council and planning commission, that they would cooperate with us, not go back out and try to conduct another sale of properties, but rather stall that process, stop that process for now, and work cooperatively with the city to see if together we can come up with a, a solution to this situation. And so that's kind of where we're at, at this point. So I wanted to bring it to the Planning Commission tonight and start getting your input. This is going to take some time, there's no question from my point of view, or from Goodyear County staff perspective, whatever's going to happen out there is going to take some time to figure out and, and actually implement if we find a, a reasonable solution for what's there today. So with regards to the, the existing conditions, what I've identified here in the black line going all through here is the area that is either forfeited to the state of Minnesota, or there's some property here and some property here that's retained by the owners of this property here that was not forfeited. So there's a little bit of property within the area we rezoned that is not subject to the forfeiture. The developer landowner is keeping their taxes current and, and continue to hold ownership of that property. But it is within the urban reserve zoning that, that we passed last year. This will give you a little bit better idea of the property that's actually been forfeited. A little bit different than the one before, here's that piece here that I indicated was kept by the developers or the owners of this property, and then through here. This is all, I'm sure you're familiar, this is all just a hill, slope in here. That's more level land, but that's all slope in there. And they've decided to retain those two, they continue to pay the taxes on that, and they also then own this. The forfeited portion of the property is here and here. And those are the lots that Goodyear County's offered up for sale through the forfeiture process that we've objected to in the last two years while this has been going on. So the question's going to be, in the future, is, what if anything, could these parcels be redeveloped to? What's a good land use, how's it done, what does it cost, what's the feasibility? All those are questions we're not going to answer tonight, but I, I will begin the conversation looking for some input from the commissioners from a land use perspective. I always love putting this one up because there's no way you can read it, especially in this area.
What kind of ideas do the county commissioners have?
Send it to us for input.
That's it?
Yeah. And it was really just one commissioner, so we haven't taken it to the full board.
Okay.
This is the topographic realities of, of that land, as well as where the existing utilities were already installed. And you can see water and sewer and storm sewer have been installed in this property already. Probably not usable infrastructure probably going to be removed, depending on what the alternatives we, we might investigate here. But the street conditions will not work, the utilities, maybe yes, probably no, but we've got existing utilities. There was in the plat, a dedicated area here for public park that, that is in the ownership of the city. But again, would I show you this, and I'll show you another one in a moment, but you can see there's considerable hill and topography in here, and obviously the entire site as you go south, southeast and southwest, there's a lot of, a lot of topography there, and some challenging soils. This one, you know, it's going to be too dark, I think. Again, without worrying too much about the actual topography, what I wanted to show you here is, this is the highest point in the Sandstone Ridge area, right in here that's I've been identified in yellow. Over here is, this is a hundred foot of elevation difference between these two. So there's a fair amount of grade differential, obviously even just in this area. If we go south and east, here's a hundred feet grade differential here. So the high point, low point, low point. So again, all that really represents is there's, there's a fair amount of property out there that arguably is not developable due to, due to existing grades.
That high point there is the wettest piece on the property also. The water runs out of the top of that, nonstop.
Artisan well up there?
You have other good news for us?
That's pretty interesting. So basically, it's, it's the subsurface that's the issue, it's all clay and moves around, you can't put any buildings in there, right?
The bigger the building, the better is kind of, the basic engineering principle behind it.
Yeah.
Isn't that an old faithful-like thing?
No, no, but it, it does stay wet.
Interesting.
And Dave's, as we, I mean arguably probably as knowledgeable or more knowledgeable about this area than, than any one of us, or maybe all of us together. So I think it's probably fair to say that he understands some of the challenges that are going to exist out there. I am pleased that the county staff, not initially, but with some conversation, gave us a reception that I thought was reasonable. That is, that it's, it's, it's not just as simple as selling these lots and collecting some money and having the county go home happy and leaving us with a problem, that that just doesn't work for us. That if we're really going to ever fix this, we really do need the cooperation of Goodyear County in a variety of ways, including them working with us. If we do come up with a plan and we start removing those existing utilities, or if we want to do some grading out there to be able to use soils, their public works department, our public works department, whatever those solutions are, I think it's going to take, you know, a balanced approach here to, to figure this mess out if we're ever going to have something out there that begins to, to create some, some economic impact to the community and/or ever gets some dollars back to the city for the lost assessments. It's not going to be a simple deal, and I think, I think the county staff, when we met with them, we really talked about that, they began to realize that, yeah, we probably are wise to work with the city of Cannon Falls, it's in our best interests as a county to do that, rather than to continue this fight about just trying to sell lots that are, are not going to be particularly developable, and, and lots if they are sold that probably aren't going to be issued building permits on. So I think we have a, we have a cooperative environment now with Goodyear County that's good, and I think over the course of the next year or two, we'll do some more work out there and try to sort out what's next for Sandstone Ridge. So that's kind of the lay of the land, so I wanted to give the, the Planning Commission that, that update tonight. And also if there's any ideas, I'm all ears, because I think again, this, this is going to, this is going to be a challenge to resolve.
What's your question?
I have questions. This is not buildable land, is that what we're saying here, that?
It's costly to build on this land.
It is.
There's, there's the issue, yeah, there's the issue of uncertain economic feasibility. I will say it's uncertain economic feasibility.
Uncertain, okay.
And there's been an investment in infrastructure-
So we don't want to do anything to the land, really?
What we talked about, Bruce, was, was doing some evaluation here, and then if it makes sense to begin going out there and remove what's been done there. To remove the streets, to remove the utilities.
Well, yeah, well, that's, that's a question, are they usable utilities?
I would bet they actually are, it wouldn't surprise me.
When Aaron was here, and everything was pretty good, except for a couple places where, over the past two years, the catch basins, since they weren't maintained and they didn't have the final wear coat on, and stuff wasn't kept up, the tree roots get in there, create, you know, push things apart and messes stuff up a little bit. So there's been some erosion and stuff on that end. That's, it's going to cost money, but it's not-
So the idea is to get some revenue off the property?
But the, the wear coat hasn't been put on, which is one of the biggest expenses.
Right.
And then up on top, by Barry Roers, Roberts' whole house, not up, not back the-
No, it's a-
Yeah. Back on there, most of those lots are buildable, relatively easy and inexpensively. Once you get to where the park is there, anything past that could be questionable.
Yeah.
The, the townhouse lots, which is, that thing is for condos, and financially you can't do a condo anymore, you've got to have the whole building done. All the infrastructure that's put in there is for condos, so you either have to amend what we have for our guidelines for a condo development, where you can run one main sewer and one main water coming in, rather than servicing each one individually is the main problem there. And that's where you get into the money.
Yeah, so, so-
So you need to wholesale, I would say you wholesale the condo end of it there, because you can't save anything down there-
Okay.
On that part of it.
So maybe a little of it-
Some of the streets can be fixed relatively easy, because every place that it's settled bad is a two-section piece of curb and gutter, right where the utility's running.
Sure.
You pull that out, you go down your four feet, you pad it up, you put stuff back in. But the wear coat's expensive, and then-
Yeah.
Then some of the, you know, some of the stuff, they're going to require some engineering on some of the lots up on top, but you're maybe going to have $2,000 to $3,000 into those. And if you stick with one firm to do it, it's less expensive.
Yeah, I think-
So, so we need to come up with ideas of, of just use, trying to get some revenue out of it as it sits?
Well, I think that's one option, or alternatively, I would say to David's point, I think there are parts of the development as it sits today that may be reasonable to retain. There are other parts that it isn't. So my, my view would be, this plan as we see it here is not a plan that's going to be developed.
Right.
So we, so if we wanted to retain maybe some of the west side, and, and if we could do it economically feasible, we could certainly connect back to Cedar Hills, and maybe we could come back with some other alternative connection back to 25, I mean-
So other, other than the part that you might be able to salvage, how do you gain any revenue from the rest, right? Is that the question?
It's, it's, it's revenue in part, not in whole. If there's a plan, if there's a plan, Bruce, where, where we could, we could come up with a plan that said, we're going to, we're going to pay back all those assessments, we're going to, we're going to finance all the costs that we incur to redevelop the site, whatever we're redeveloping it to. If there was a, a plan that showed revenue to pay those costs-
Yeah, I got you.
That would be great.
Well, yeah, but that's not going to happen.
That's what I say, revenue, revenue isn't the sole objective, but what is an objective is, can we fix this mess? If so, what is the cost? And depending on what a cost, what are the costs compared to what revenues we might derive by fixing it? Or are we better off just saying?
What, Dave, what are we into it for about 280?
Yeah.
What's that average out on what you have for?
280 what?
1,000.
280 or 208?
I thought it was 280.
280, it's, 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 yeah, bumping up to 300, I think.
300.
So I mean, it's-
So, and that hurts us how?
You got 30 lots, so that's 10,000.
Doesn't hurt us much, does it?
Well, I guess it's old money.
I mean, we're not going to get it back anyway, right? Unless you put more money into it.
Well, and really-
Yeah, you're going to have to spend money to make money.
And then you don't know.
And then you don't know.
From what Mr. Price said, it sounds like-
Put the city in the development.
Sounds like it's more, I don't know.
Maybe 12?
Is that about 12 lots reasonably?
Well, par, partial part of it.
You got in, you got about 12 lots marked out in there? I think, and the-
I think those can be taken care of relatively easy, and down where Paul Field is, you could put a cul-de-sac down there.
Although that adds, that adds 20 grand per lot then.
Put the cul-de-sac in?
Well, if you're trying to recoup your cost of 280 or whatever.
The good news is our land, land cost is cheap, probably.
Well, there's some advantages to having cheap land.
You know, I, I would think that some of those utilities out there would probably still have to be good. I would think they'd really have to take a good look at them, wouldn't they? And run some tests or something?
Sure.
The pedestals and all that stuff, just, they need to be leveled off and-
There's only certain kinds of homes that'll-
I think, most of the, most of the curb stops are all up high because it's tough to mow.
If they run electric and all that up there too, phone?
Yep.
The kids are-
See, because-
On the street because that infringes on partying ability, so somebody can see what you're doing.
That's, that's probably a pretty good spot to party up there.
It is. I mean, there's a nice spot up there where you can't be seen. There's a big burn spot in the middle of the hole from the bonfires, they're in the middle of the street.
Cool.
And it's barricaded, so the cops can't get in too fast. You've got time to get out another way.
Oh, you do have another way out, you always want, yeah, always, got me into trouble once. You have two ways out.
You know, that almost sounds like those 10 or 12 lots, and those might be reasonable to think that those could be, I guess, residential, regular residential lots.
The little ones could be too, but all of those, it's going to cost you starting at the very end. They wanted 2,000, 2,000, and then three and three, and then 5,000 for the engineering fees.
I see a pit here they throw money into. That's what I see.
You know, to, to do the engineering to put the bait, you know, to get your foundations in. And pretty much the whole thing, you've got to make sure the house is plenty high, no irrigation up close to the house, proper drainage is the main solution to the whole thing for, if you're going to be building houses.
And, and we don't want to be in the, that business.
You know, the, one of the things that might be able to be considered on some of that other land then, if it, if it was already considered for a park, I wonder what would happen. You were talking about those big.
Is the county interested in having this as another county park?
Or not even a park, but what about a campground? Because if they got all that electric and stuff run through all the, all the.
You could produce, yeah, revenue producing.
High end RV and it's got the trail right on 25 and right into town.
Yeah, there's some revenue that could be produced that way.
Well, it's just a thought, but you know, you could do more with just planting some trees and you could probably just use like a, more of a pervious surface for the pads for those as long as it's good. It doesn't have to be tar for those.
Right. No, I, in all seriousness with, with, with the county, Bruce, I mean, again, just, we, we are with staff and one of the five commissioners. I think, and again, it was a supportive commissioner, supportive for Cannon Falls. Can't respond to the others, but I think seriously, what, the, the point we're trying to make to Goodhue County is this property has some challenges. And if the county's ever going to derive any revenue, tax base or anything out of this, we're going to have to cooperate with each other to find a way to do it. And if the county has some needs, parkland, if they want to do an RV, we want to do an RV, whatever it is, we've got to figure that out because this isn't going to work the way it sits. And then the question is, at the end of the day, whatever we're figuring out is, is, is that economically feasible? And who's paying what to whom? Well, I'm not here tonight on behalf of the EDA. We haven't talked about this at the EDA. Or even as a city is saying, we as a city want to develop this property and take it over. That's, I'm not here saying that. I'm here saying if Sandstone Ridge is going to ever be fixed, it's going to take the cooperation of the city and county at the least. But what that means, we don't know yet. But it's, it's, it's a fairly deep hole.
Kind of have to have a direction to head and everybody be unified to get to the end run.
Right. So I think mixed views.
The lots up there on the townhouse, that's a lost cause. I mean, there's, I don't think there's anybody even in town looking for, unless the, our buddy from.
Yeah, maybe.
Can you rent?
Looking for a place to build rental units. That's the only thing I can think of there.
Right.
Can you rent it to somebody to park something? I mean, maybe they've got heavy duty equipment they need to get off the highway and park it for a while. I mean, is it available for rental? You know, to have a place to park stuff?
Yeah, you've got to be careful because down on.
On what?
Well, I would think.
I understand down here, you've got to be careful because you've got your homeowners and all your.
Yeah, I mean, just park stuff.
Parking stuff.
No. Oh, you mean they'll get into it? It's not secure.
Well, there's, there's, there's going to be interest. I mean, because even when we, when we notified the neighbors of the public hearing to rezone, I, I definitely got some calls and I've had calls since from the neighbors. So I mean, that is a part of this equation too, because right now at urban reserve, urban reserve zoning doesn't allow much to be done.
Yeah.
So if there is going to be a land use change, it's probably going to require rezoning and we're going to notify the folks in the immediate area and I'm sure they'll have something to say.
Let's see, how about the University of Minnesota having it as a research area or something, you know? Throw grass on it or something. It's hard to say.
Yeah, I think mixed use is probably the direction that we're probably going to be heading, but mixed use, meaning what? You know, I'm not sure.
What is so unique about this land that makes it such a, an issue? What's, it is all clay as I understand. Is that? Blue clay. That's, that's unique?
And as long as you take the right precautions when you're building, it's a little bit more expensive, but nobody supervised.
It's like a sponge.
When it was being done.
Yeah.
It's always moving then. It's like a sponge.
Shoved it through. Nobody was watching behind ST when they were doing all their stuff.
So do I understand it right?
It's gone in the middle.
It's moving all the time.
Boom. And now it's dry. It's been five years, 10 years. And now all the clay's shrunk back up, so everything's settled back down.
Got it.
So now if you're going to go in and fix stuff, now it's time.
I mean, no development, no, in, in the broad sense of the, of, of the word, is an alternative.
It's not a unique natural resource though.
No.
No. It's just clay. Blue clay.
So it could be that we.
They have the real expansive capability, kind of like around Denver. Clay soils around Denver.
Yeah.
Dump a little water on it and they.
Yeah, I understand clay.
Increase 10 times the size.
Yep. It could be several building sites and the rest undeveloped area as an alternative. You know, that doesn't answer the revenue question you had, but that could very well be the, the practical economic feasibility solution. And then the city loses money.
But if it was a campground, you could.
Yeah, like another K O A or something like that. Something similar to that.
I didn't see that.
So that's, uh, this is going to be resolved by next week, so.
By next week, huh?
It's things.
Does the county want it?
Does the county want it?
County doesn't want it.
County wants to sell it.
County wants to what?
Sell it.
Sell it.
Through tax forfeiture.
To who?
To whomever would buy it.
Whoever will buy it. And they've tried?
Oh, yeah, twice.
And they've had no.
Well, but, but part of the reason they haven't is because we told them both times, if anyone calls us with an interest to develop it, we're going to say no permits, which is what we did.
Yeah.
So you can, you can have sales all day long if you want. And if people want to buy it and take a chance that they can convince this city that, that what they bought is something that we ought to allow them to develop, have at it. Nobody, nobody did.
I will have to say with my experiences on dealing with it, a certain engineering department is rather tough to negotiate. Even though I have the same people doing the engineering that originally proposed everything that the city had hired and looked at for the changes and fixes and everything else. The engineering firm now that kind of put the kiboshes to it wouldn't let anything go any further. And that, that's the reason I walked away from it.
And, and what's.
Requiring too much time and too much stuff. And there was, we're going to do it this way and nothing else is going to work. You either do it my way or we're not doing it.
Well, the other part of that too is that was, that was just a few years right before the housing boom too, wasn't it? Where it went bust? Just before it.
2004?
Yeah.
Four, five.
And by 2006, building already pretty well disappeared for six years.
Houses had heard that was, you know, and then there was no interest.
This is a good site for an antenna farm or something like that. You know, it's high.
Wind turbines? And we've actually had a neighbor question about that, not in opposition.
I mean, the alternate energy source that produce revenue for the city.
Yeah, yeah. No, that, I'm fine with that and Goodhue County. And Goodhue County.
They love wind. That's right.
One of those, one big one to do about 1,800 volts.
No, 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 no.
They're looking for solar farms now in Goodhue County for the corona proposal and, I don't know.
They.
For the big, the new one? What are they doing now? Five megawatts or whatever it is?
That, that makes, that's as good a sense as anything, you know?
The other reality is.
I know it used to be about $2 million to put up a, a, one of those nice big turbines.
It's, it's expensive and, you know, the, the, the two colleges in North Hill can afford to do it because they have extremely long-term investment horizons. For us, not quite so much. The, the developers that let this go, forfeiture, are these guys.
Oh, the same ones?
Yep. So we know in the future, even though there's some challenges with topography and other things on this piece, we know in the future that these folks are going to want to market that property.
As you get to the backside of the hill, the problems with the soils decrease significantly as you get back towards.
That's maybe why they let some of it go. Well, and you've got to figure that the taxes for the part that, that got, I guess, improved with sewer and water and
Yep.
phone and electric and all that.
Yeah. Yeah. So they, they kind of walked from the investment that they made, let it go forfeit, at least the areas in yellow, but same group holds it.
Between the two, I thought that was supposed to be a easement and tree preservation and drainage and everything.
Between which, between which two?
Between the hillside going, yeah, all that.
Yeah. Yeah, there's, there's nothing going on in there. I mean, I, I think they probably kept that because I think the market value in that land is total, it's less than 20,000 total. So the taxes on that land are not, they're not much. So like I say, for whatever reason they chose to hold on to that in this piece and they own that piece. So in the future, I mean, we can, we can wait. Someday, somebody's going to come forward and say, gee, we'd like to do something over here. And guess what? Okay, we're ready to deal. Let's talk, see what happens. I mean, that's, we, as I say, we have a series of, of, of alternatives here to, to pursue. It's going to take time no matter what we do, but even short term, as we can generate some more information, maybe we decide to go in there and, and take out the truly bad utilities and streets and just get rid of it. Maybe we do some regrading, maybe we create some lots, maybe we look at some other options for, for selling or renting that land, whatever isn't usable as residential and, and see where we head.
Would you recommend that anything we do produce some kind of revenue after we're done with it? Otherwise, we shouldn't do anything.
Right. Yeah. Are we starting at 300 in the negative or are we starting at zero? It makes a difference.
Yeah, don't throw any more money at it unless you know it's going to produce revenue.
Right, right.
Simple.
So, all good? You'll have answers in a month?
I can think of a lot of things.
Well, we'll continue to keep that on our agendas and kind of watch to see where this heads, but like I say, the good news is in all honesty that Goodhue County, I think, realizes that it's not as easy as just offering this up for sale and taking some money and, and like what happened next door. Just taking the money and moving on.
Thanks.
That brings us to the signage project. For business signage along Highway 52.
You, I'm sure have noticed we have a highway project going on out on 52.
Yep.
And part of that project includes the closing of the existing access points to 52 at 24. We all know that. And the, the city council and MINDOT are cooperating with each other, have hired a consultant to work with MINDOT to look at alternatives, if any, for retaining some type of access somehow at 24, near 24. That safety study is underway now. We probably aren't going to see any real, I guess, information coming out of that study until I'm guessing late August, early September, the way it looks. So the study's underway. Whether it produces an, an alternative for consideration of retaining or building new access 24 or somewhere in that vicinity onto 52 or not remains to be seen. But as part of that safety study, we also had agreed with, with the ombudsman through MINDOT that there would be some participation by MINDOT to talk with the property owners who are being affected by this project about signage. And the signage conversation right now, based on the first meeting that's been held primarily with the property owners who are most impacted in the south corridor, was held last week. And MINDOT had their signage folks here and basically made a presentation to the property owners, business people out there to say that if you want to participate in logo signing, you've all seen on the expressways, the freeways where there's signs that, that advertise individual businesses. That's under a logo program. That's a, that's a program that's going to be available for the first time on the 52 corridor in Cannon Falls. That's the good news maybe. The bad news is potentially that the property owners pay for that or the businesses who wish to advertise pay for that. MINDOT has a sole contract provider statewide that handles the, the logo program. And that individual will be contacting the property owners in Cannon Falls to, to gauge their interest and, and talk with them about opportunities to have their business advertised on a logo in the 52 corridor, maybe as soon as the next couple of months. So MINDOT basically told the owners that, that that's going to be something that's available to them. They'll have to make their decisions as to whether or not to do it. Also talked with the, the property owners and businesses about the temporary signage, the, the access. Well, the south access is probably going to close this week. The north one will be a while yet, but there will be temporary signage probably provided by MINDOT. Those are the orange and black signs that you've seen. So then it's probably my guess, MINDOT's got to make this determination, my guess is they may be willing to come back with some type of east frontage road business, west frontage road businesses exit here sort of thing. They're not going to identify individual businesses. I can't imagine a scenario that MINDOT would approve that from what I heard last week. So there will be some temporary signage probably in the orange and black. But that's going to, that's going to take care of the corridor, the 52 corridor. The additional thing that, that I talked with MINDOT about and the property owners on the south side about with a director from the chamber board and others is how do we sign in Cannon Falls, Minnesota from Highway 52 into the community, not just the south corridor that's being disrupted now with the construction of the, of the road project, but also the downtown and points beyond. And I want to explain to you that this is where it gets a little bit complicated with, with MINDOT and signage. But the, the graphic I have here is in red from Highway 52 going east and west, all the way through town, all the way past the high school and, and out of town. That's MINDOT controlled right of way in terms of signage. So if anybody wants to put a sign on Highway 19, east, west through the community, MINDOT regulations apply, not city of Cannon Falls, if you're within their right of way. We can sign things outside of the right of way, but within the right of way is all MINDOT, which is why you don't see any private signage.
They have been actively replacing signage on 19 in the last two weeks. On my corner, they replaced all kinds of it there and then did cut trees too to make them visible.
Okay.
So they've been pretty active on it already.
There is a requirement though too, the first signage that they have to be up by a certain date.
Yeah.
The new reflective stuff.
Yep. Yeah. And they put some more pedestrian signage up there too.
And that's, that's directory and safety signage that MINDOT will do. That's really their public signage within that right of way, which they will do without our involvement at all. If I wanted to put a sign there, Bruce, you want to put a sign in there to advertise our, our restaurant, couldn't do it.
Right.
Within this right of way. MINDOT also controls downtown going north on 20. So as we go north out of town on 20, that's MINDOT right of way as well. The signage that exists on the businesses downtown, on their buildings, that's regulated by us as a city. But anything that goes on the sidewalk or within that 80 foot right of way downtown is regulated by MINDOT. Any signs that you see down there are illegal probably, have not been permitted. I only enforce if I, if, if someone tells me there's a sign within the community, whether it's in MINDOT right of way or, or on private property, that's not been permitted or they think it's illegal and they complain, I will go investigate. And if it is, I will talk with the property owners to remove it or make corrections to make it fit, but I only do that on a complaint basis. The signs that sometimes end up on the sidewalks downtown, if no one's complaining, I'm not talking to MINDOT. If anyone's complaining to MINDOT, MINDOT will come out and talk to the property owners and choose to have them remove that. So going north on 20 is MINDOT right of way as well. That's the easy part. The complicated part, and this is the point, point that we're, we're taking with, with the highway department, I'm going to get in close to be able to show you this a little bit better. Here's existing 24 here. The areas in red Willow Trail, which you don't recognize because that's going to be the new name of County 24 as you're going west out of town, that will be Willow Trail. But a portion of Willow Trail will be a city street. That is city street from the standpoint of our sign regulations will, will, will control that. As you go down the west side frontage road, there again, that's going to become a city signage consideration. 318th, 320th, the same. Until we get out of town, the yellow road, which is the new baggage road, that's in Cannon Falls Township. It's either going to be them or Goodhue County. So we're going to have signage on the west side of 52, some of which will be. we're gonna have signage on the west side of 52, some of which will be regulated by the City of Cannon Falls. Properties outside of the city where the new baggage road sits will be either Cannon Falls Township or Goodhue County will regulate signage there.
What, you say or? Are they still deciding about that?
I'm not sure jurisdictionally if Cannon Falls Township is going to regulate signs, or they're gonna choose to, to, through their zoning, do that with Goodhue County. So, I don't know. But it's not gonna be us.
Right.
That's the main thing I care about. Here's the two roundabouts, one here and one over here. Those are MINDOT. That's gonna be MINDOT regulation. So, any kind of signage that goes near or within those roundabouts is gonna be regulated by MINDOT. This part of the road comes through the area that was annexed to the city. We'll control that, I guess, but I've left it at yellow for the time being, because there's really no development proposed out here at this point, anyway. So, I'm not too worried about it. On the east side, get up a little bit higher. Hickory Court, when 24 is closed, and that's a cul-de-sac, the proposed name is Hickory Court, and that location, that will be city. 24 turned back to City of Cannon Falls from Goodhue County will become city. Here's MINDOT here. This is the new County 24 Boulevard going over to 25. That's gonna be Goodhue County. So, on the south side, from a regulatory perspective, with regards to signage, we've got the City of Cannon Falls, Goodhue County, Cannon Falls Township, the state of Minnesota, all with different regulations. It's kind of a mess. So, what we've impressed upon MINDOT as part of the safety study and, and the 24 access question, we've asked MINDOT to work with us on developing a, a signage program that makes some sense to all the parties who are being impacted by this. And when I talk about that, I mean, private business signing. Well, some directory signage, but also private business signing. So, it, it really is kind of a mess out on the, out on the south side. One of the things that we talked about at the chamber in the past, as well as with the businesses last week, is what Red Wing's done. Red Wing, under state law, did what's called a, a community signage program approved by MINDOT. So, if you've been over to Red Wing lately, and I'll show you some of these signs, I'm sure you've seen them. MINDOT allowed, statutorily, based on a plan, allowed City of Can, City of Red Wing to put signage within the, the highway rights-of-way in Red Wing. But they did it only subject to approval of, of a plan, which we don't have. We've talked about developing a plan. We may end up going that direction and, and, and working on something like that. But if you look at what Red Wing really wanted to do, is, is they wanted kind of a consistent message through their signage. They wanted some ability to have signs look the same, so that the traveling public would recognize if they see this sign, that if they see another sign that's similar to that, it's directing them somewhere. And I'll show you how Red Wing did that in a moment. They wanted to help the visitors and residents find their way around the community. They wanted more flexibility, because quite honestly, the MINDOT regulations don't work for what communities wanna do. MINDOT regulations are primarily based on safety and, and getting people through your community, not to stop in your community. So, it's different objectives. And they wanted to, in Red Wing, they wanted to have kinda the single identity, a single brand. So, those, those were their objectives. And the way that they have begun implementing that, I'm gonna show you a series of signs from the outside of the community coming in. So, if you're seven miles from downtown Red Wing, you might see a sign out on 61 that looks like this, telling you in a, in a very early way, downtown Red Wing is seven miles from there. The Pottery District is five miles. Prairie Island is one mile. So, there's, there's a, a, a first impression sign that's part of the plan that Red Wing had approved by MINDOT. From there, oops, they've included some district signs. In this case, they wanted the historic Pottery District, but the regulations don't allow them to say Pottery District, 'cause that's kind of a business. But they do allow to, to say a, a downtown district. So, in this case, there are several district signs that, that Red Wing has approved, including the historic district, which is a similar design, similar look, includes their logo on all the signs. And they were approved to do this, and they've actually put some of those in already. They also have destination signs, which takes you another step closer to certain sites in their community that they wanna identify, Barn Bluff, Colville Park. So, again, as you're coming into Red Wing from the outside, these signs lead you to certain places if you're looking for them. And it's a fairly well-done plan, I think. And the signs are very well-done, and they're consistent in, in what they look like. So, it's relatively simple for those coming into the community, in, in the mix of all the other signs that are there, to be able to identify some of these things. They've got an entrance sign, which we do, we'll talk about that in a minute. They've also got entrance signs to Red Wing, which are in place. So, you know when you get to Red Wing that you're, that you're Edward, in Red Wing. And they also have directional signs. And these are the ones that bring you even closer. In this case, it's Barn Bluff, and the Sheldon Theater and others. So, they, they have a different kind of sign, that once you're getting closer to town, getting closer to some of the sites that they wanna identify, that they also have those as part of their program. Maybe a better idea of what they, what they really look like. They're, they are not inexpensive signs. Red Wing does things the way Red Wing wants to do them. But I will say that, in my view, they're very, they're very nice signs. They're attractive signs. They don't put, they didn't put all the signs in at one time. They've been phasing them in each and every year. But this plan and the signs that they've put in were approved by MINDOT for placement within the highway right-of-way, subject to approval of the plan. One of the challenges that we still have here, and I, I didn't have, I can't find a better one than, than this. You all know the welcome to Cannon Falls signs on the north end, and the one that's now missing on the south end. These, these two signs that we have had both been approved by MINDOT for placement on 52. The one to the north was, was put in by special permit. I don't remember which one came first, which one came second, probably doesn't matter. And the one on the south side is the one that we've removed temporarily, because it was in the way of the, of the construction of the, of the overpass. So, it's sitting down at the Public Works Department. That sign, the welcome to Cannon Falls sign, will be replaced somewhere. Where exactly it's replaced, I'm not sure yet. We're, we're looking at that. But it may very well require some cooperation from MINDOT, if it's gonna be placed within their right-of-way. Couple of years ago, there was discussion, there was a temporary advertisement out here for the Wine and Art Festival. That was temporary. There's been conversations since that point, saying, gee, these are pretty healthy-sized signs. Maybe we should do some more advertising beyond just the welcome to Cannon Falls on these. Maybe we should, maybe we shouldn't. But I think that's gonna be part of the conversation, you know, when we get into figuring out what we're gonna do for, for signs in Cannon Falls. So, it's, it's again, something I bring to the, to the commission as, as information right now. The chamber board's talked about this. There's been other people in the last several years talking to me about this, that this is something we really need to figure out. How do we effectively, through signage, let the, let the passersby's know on, on 52, if they're coming to Cannon Falls, or they're thinking about coming to Cannon Falls, either on the New South Interchange, or Highway 19, or up on the new interchange, up on 86? With a long linear community like we have, it's a little bit of a challenge, you know, to come up with a signage program that really maybe produces some, some benefits to the, to those who are looking for, for those signs. So, it's, it's something that I think, if, if you're interested in a planning commission, I'll, I'll come back and, and we can have conversations about this in the future. Honestly, I don't have a proposal for this, either. I feel a little bit better about Sandstone Ridge and proposals than I do on this one. This is tough, because it's just, the, the geography of this community, the, the, the different jurisdictions, including Dakota County up on, on the 86 now, that we're gonna have to deal with to, to do signage. It gets, it gets complicated. It, it, it's not gonna be inexpensive to implement a sign program in this community. And the question of, what are we really trying to identify as, as sites of, of interest that we wanna direct people to in this community? There's, there's a lot of them. It's, it's gonna be a little tricky to, to get through this. But I know that the property owners down south, on the south side of 52, they're concerned, not just about the logo program, but they're also concerned with this, this closure of 24. We're gonna have new traffic patterns. And what about the folks that miss? They're coming north, they miss that. How do we get them onto 19 and back to where they're going? How do we get folks from the south end, going north into the, into the downtown area, or to the school? How do we get the folks coming from the north, going south? And when, when the new interchange is up at 86, how do we get them in? I mean, it's, it's a little bit tricky with, with our geography and distance to really come up with, in my view, an effective signage program to, to really accomplish some of the objectives similar to what, what Red Wing, you know, had with, with their plan. So, it's just something I wanted to bring to your attention tonight, and think about that. And if, and if you think, as a planning commission, this is the craziest thing we've ever thought about doing, run the other way. I'll take your advice, and, and I'll continue to deal with the chamber and others, until someone says, no, we're not gonna do it. But in my view, since I was asked to look at this several years ago through the chamber, I don't think it was the right time at this point. Now, I think, is the right time, primarily because MINDOT agreed through the ombudsman process to participate with us on signage. And maybe I'm the eternal optimist, but I know that so far, they've been willing to listen to us, and they understand that we're, we're not totally unique in Cannon Falls, but there are some complications here. There are some circumstances that are challenging for signage. And I think they're willing to stay with us for a while, to see if we can find a way to, to work this out. And also through the ombudsman process, and I'll just mention this in passing, Representative Kelly and Senator Schmidt have been involved with, with this question on County 24 from the beginning. They're invited to all of the meetings. They're definitely paying attention, both of them. And I, I continue to maintain that this road, that the state of Minnesota is building, has now created some challenges for this community. And how we fix this, I'm not sure. What it costs to fix this, if we're going to, I'm not sure. It's gonna cost something. And my view continues to be, to Senator Schmidt and Representative Kelly and MINDOT, you know, this is your road, state of Minnesota. This, this has changed the traffic patterns in this community, and will continue to change them significantly in the future. And we'd like to cooperate with MINDOT, if we can, with a program that helps direct people around this community, so the economy that exists here, and has existed here, has a fighting chance to exist in the future, partly through signage. It won't be the only answer, but it'll be part of the answer. So, we'll, we'll see. But any suggestions or comments you have at this point would be welcome. And if you wanna think about it, that's fine, too.
It wouldn't be that tough to copy, not copy exactly, but put something together that Red Wing has already produced. And we don't have to copy their signs exactly, because this, what they have's relatively expensive.
Maybe a community contest or something.
Some of the brass plaques and everything that they've got.
Yeah. Yeah. No, and I've got their whole plan.
To get into MINDOT, and that approach is probably quite a bit better to do than suffer the consequences from later on, when they dictate to us what we can and can't. At least this way, we've got a little choice over it upfront.
Right.
And we know what's coming.
And even the logo signs, because I think, you know, the, the logo advertising for the south businesses, that's fine. They're close. But the winery is an example. The winery is allowed under state law to have logo signage, and they're probably gonna do that. So, the question is, where does it go? How's it done? And how expensive is it? To get from Highway 52, if you're coming from the south going north, and you're coming in from the south corridor, with two roundabouts on the east side of the road, those, there's, there's also signage that goes along with the logos that you place on 52. So, once you get off of 52, onto the roundabout, or the roundabouts in this case, there's also additional signage there that helps direct you towards the winery. So, let's say you maneuver off of 52, you get through the two roundabouts, you get back onto the existing County 24 road that's being connected to the new roundabouts. You gotta get from there downtown. So, how do you, how do you sign that effectively, too? And it, and it ends up being a, a long string to get from where you're coming, in this example, off of 52 south, to, to downtown, to the winery. And
They'd be better off to use 19.
They'd be better off to use 19. And now, we're back into the jurisdiction, now, we're back into the jurisdiction of, of Highway 19 being under MINDOT. So, that's where we need the
If you have the fairgrounds, that there's a lot of nice flat land there that we could utilize to put something up as far as, and we don't.
Right.
We got the
That's not city.
Down there.
Fairgrounds is not city property.
No.
Oh, it's not?
No.
Hmm?
No.
Not city property?
Nope.
No.
It's got its own
Yeah.
Yep.
So, like I say, it's, it's kind of a sticky wicket, but my view is, it's certainly worth looking at. And if we're gonna look at it now, is the time with MINDOT, because of the safety study, and the ombudsman's still paying attention to this. And the state signing engineer, who was here last week, who I'd never met before, out of St. Paul, I think she understands some of the challenges that we're working with here. She offered up a couple of examples up in the Twin Cities area, that she's gonna be sending me as, as kinda food for thought, to how to, how to address things like this. And that's all I'm looking for, you know? Help us out here. Show us what, show us some other good ideas. Let us have some input from you, and see if we can find a way to figure this out.
Always like big letters on the water tower. Of course, I was flying at the time, so.
Not everyone comes in by helicopter.
Yeah.
And if they do, they're not looking for signs, usually.
What's the cost to implement? Say that if I, if we did something similar, what the program is in Red Wing?
The, the cost of the program or the signs?
No, just to get it implemented. How much work?
Designers?
Well, I
Do we have to do upfront?
Yeah. I think we can
Implement something like that? Or, you know, how mu, how much is the city attorney gonna have to be involved in it, is basically?
Yeah.
I'm assuming Red Wing came at the, the, MINDOT with a whole package, all put together.
Yeah, I've got, I've got their entire plan. And, and I would say it's doable, from our perspective as staff. I think we can do
They have to just change some of the stuff, just in our situations versus what they have done.
Yeah.
But they're relatively linear.
Right.
I mean, if you take where you get off for the casino, all the way down to the southeast corner of town there, well, you've got 20 miles off.
Yeah, yeah.
I think someone mentioned the contest, or, you know, a city local
Well, you wanna, we want all the signage to have some consistency, is
Right.
Right.
So, that's where the, you can spend a lot of money doing.
And we'd have to retrofit the ones we got for Highway 52.
Don't worry about those.
Put the little logo on there, see?
Stamp it on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could have some kinda contest.
But do you have to have the logo and all of the, everything, the whole layout put together before it goes to the state, then?
Well, the, the whole, for the most part. Red Wing didn't get everything they asked for. They, they were denied on a few things. And you're always allowed the opportunity to go to the variance committee, which they chose not to. They just took the denials, I think, and, and moved forward. But it's really, it's a mapping exercise. This, this is where we're thinking, we want signs. This is the message that we're thinking about putting on those signs in those, in those locations.
You gotta be careful also, at the same point, you can't target specific businesses.
Right.
You have to leave a general as parks or communities, or, you can target your high school.
Right.
And a few things like that. But you have to be pretty
You know, we've thought about, or I've thought about, not we, I've thought about. One, one thing that Red Wing did, which is, is, is part of their sign program, but not part of this plan. If you're coming in on the, on the west side, coming into downtown, on the south side, they actually have a logo sign. But the logo sign is not businesses, it's civic organizations. And it's not in the public right-of-way, it's on city-owned property, which I thought was interesting. And I, and I, and I'm not speaking out of school. I, I was a little, as I drove by, at 30, 35, 40 miles an hour, it's, it's too much information, and it's too far off the road, it's difficult to read. So, I don't think it's all that effective. But what it got me thinking about is, is with our park-and-ride facility and some of the other public land that we have outside of the Highway 19 right-of-way, we might, if there's enough visibility, we might have a situation there where we could do our own logo signing, outside of the Highway 19 right-of-way, if we wanted to. And put, and put messages there that aren't gonna be allowed even by the, the sign destination program that, that statutorily is available to us. So, I mean, we, going north on 20 through Main Street, nah, we don't really have much, you know, we can, we can do in there. But I think the 19 corridors, as you get closer to downtown on, on certainly the south and the north side, there's probably some opportunities worth looking at. Maybe that's something we wanna consider. So, I think, like I say, we, I think we could do the, the layout of the, of the, of the locations and, and the planning for that, and start sorting some of those things out, without having to go out and, and hire anybody to assist us. When it gets down to what are the signs gonna look like, that's not gonna be me. You know, so, we can certainly bring ideas, or we can get ideas from others. But we're gonna have to have in the plan, a representation to MINDOT, if, under that legislation, and this is what we're looking to, to do here. There's what they're gonna There's what they're going to look like, here's kind of what they're going to say, this is going to be where they're going to be located, and this is what we want to do. And again, south of downtown on, from the intersection of 20, 19 downtown going south, that's all us. And we have to deal with MINDOT going south all the way out to the new interchange. But it's also a long ways. You know, so...
Well, I think it's worth pursuing. I mean, we've been relatively successful with the murals. I mean, every day we give compliments.
You see, Steve had told me today that they were maybe going to start...
They started painting white sometime today, but I think they got sprinkled.
The rain, yeah, yeah. So, that Brewster's mural is getting close to getting completed, so...
Some of that type of stuff, you know, that should be something that we should be able to get on the signs just to get people downtown. And that's part of the goal, is to get them to the heart.
And we have the questions. I mean, now with GPS, it's not nearly what it used to be, but, you know, signing to the high school.
Yeah.
You know, and that's something we could do even with the MINDOT program if we show how we're going to do it. But if we don't do that, there's no allowance for that. They're not going to allow it. We've already asked them. So, I mean, if it's generally something that you think has some merit, at least looking at, if you're comfortable with that, that's probably all I need at this point. If you think that this is just craziness, that's fine, too. Just let me know.
I think it's a good idea to kind of have a unified effort, a unified, constant type, something like what Red Wing has. And nobody says we have to do it overnight. It can be done in stages this year, along to defer some of the cost for your own.
Well, yeah, as a city, we've got a budget for it.
Right. And I'm thinking that the big thing is the money and, you know, I can come up with ideas or citizen participation in the logo and some of the graphic stuff that you have to... The volunteer time goes along, like, you can take it off on your taxes.
We could pledge the revenue from Sandstone Ridge.
It'd be nice if they put a rest area up. That'd give a lot of people a reason to pull off.
Yeah, there you go.
Now, that's probably the biggest sign I look for when I'm traveling down the highway. Some area to rest.
Right.
But I don't see any of them on 52 here at all. I think we're the perfect spot for that. Something to get them off the road.
Well, and like I said, one thing I'm going to watch for, because I'm not exactly sure how this is going to be done with this logo program, again, with 86, 19, and I guess we'll call it 24 on the south side. Not exactly clear to me yet how MINDOT through their logo program is going to deal with a Cannon River Winery or anybody else for that matter in terms of placement of signage and cost. I mean, it's not inexpensive to advertise with these logos.
Well, the ones they were talking about, the logo signs, are those the ones that you see along highways or interstates where they've got, I don't know, a bunch of different lodging places and gas? Is that what you're talking about?
Right.
Those are the logo ones, yeah, yeah.
Peterson's would be a tough one. If you're coming in on 20.
To find that.
I mean, who, if you're not from town, who's going to find it?
I'm from town. I'm not sure I'm going to find it anymore.
We had, we're going to go round about.
And Ray was here with Cannon Power Sports and he asked the perfect question to the MINDOT folks. You don't have to dim the lights, Bill, but if you're...
If they're coming from Hastings, how are you going to get somebody in his place?
North or south, you've got to, let's say, the worst case is, let's say, you're coming from the south going north. You've got to come up here, you've got roundabout number one, roundabout number two, roundabout number three. Coming up here, and you're either going to come across 318th, 320th, you're going to miss both those, come up here and hopefully come back. You know, it's not a simple maneuver. It really isn't. We had one of the businessmen that was at the meeting who's operating out in that area now said, because they've got the roads paved, part of the roads paved now. He said, "I tried to find my own place and I couldn't find it." That's not good. So, it's a little bit of a challenge. I was looking, Dan, I don't see...
A little bit of an extreme there, I think, maybe.
I don't know where my other overhead went. There's going to be the gas, food lodging, the blue signs, the standard blue signs that you see out on interstates that identify primarily gas, food, and lodging. Those are going in as part of MINDOT's project, for sure. So, south and north, there will be the blue signs identifying gas, food lodging, basically. So, those are going in as part of the project. The logo signs are additional and those are paid for by the business.
The logo signs are the bigger ones where it says McDonald's or SA.
Right.
And they have a bigger piece and there's usually two cars up on the whatever. And they do one, a lot of times it's one that's...
The MINDOT ones are the blue ones, just, you know, gas.
Right.
And that's primarily what he uses.
Not colored graphics, but... So, this would be southbound going north. So, you're going to see, and again, there's signage further south. But as you get into Cannon Falls, you're going to see this sign here and then County 24 Boulevard. So, you'll come in. And then you've got a decision to make at that first roundabout. Now, there's also signage, directional signage at that first roundabout. So, you see again here is a smaller... You get the smaller one of the same thing, but it's going to give you directions.
Yeah.
Well, you know, that's neat.
By the time you read all those, you're going past it.
That's neat, yeah, but that's the problem, so...
By the time I find my glasses where I can see them.
Right. So, you're going to come up, you're going to make a decision then. Is it over here? Is it over here? Do I do this? Do I do this? Where do I go? So, that's going to be the standard signage that's coming with the highway project.
Will they have a downtown Cannon Falls on 19 then, for 19?
We, they have a new category for attractions.
Or business district.
Attractions, yeah. We can't advertise, we can do a historic district. We can advertise individual businesses within the historic district. So, part of our challenge, going back to the Red Wing thing, is are there parts of the community that we want to identify with signage out in this area? And if so, what can we sign? So, again, the historic district is going to be defined, the historic downtown district. I think that's fine language. But we're not going to be able to, you know, I suppose we do the museum, maybe. We've got to identify...
Library?
Library. We have to identify a list of attractions and the attractions are defined by law as to whether they really truly are attractions, whether they're big enough, whether they're significant enough. And if they are, we have the ability to sign those, so...
Bike trail.
Yeah. And Cannon Valley Trail's out there now on the brown ones. They're finally allowed after years and years and years. But it's still, it's still a challenge of how do we...
Well, with changing...
Cooperate with us here.
With changing a lot of that, you know, maybe there's, see a lot of communities where it'll say, I don't know, the town name and next three exits or something.
Yeah.
Maybe that'd be a good idea, both the south and the north side. Doesn't have to be anything fancy, but at least if somebody knows, they got three chances here to make it, you know? Usually, they got a pretty good idea which side of the road they're looking to be on. But maybe then they'll understand that they need to act if they plan on getting off.
Problem is, it's the learning curve to get to that point is going to be two years.
Yeah, yeah. And if you're going...
Financial loss on that two-year period.
Right.
That's, that's the well-off for maybe, I guess.
If you're going north on 52 and you don't pay much attention to the blue signs about specific food and you're going north and you see Country Kitchen, you go, "Jeez, I really want to do that." Can I get up to 19 and find a way to do that and get back? If so, how? And will it work? And what does it cost? And it's, like I say, this...
Black Stallion's a very good example of what Ken, Ben, and Will have.
Yeah, right. So, signage isn't going to solve everyone's issue, but it's, like I say, it's... I think we're going to have to find a way to use 19, both going north, south, and east. We're going to have to find a way to use that because that's the corridor that's probably got the most familiarity with it now. But how do we sign it? And if we do sign it, how effective is it? What do the signs look like? Who are we advertising? I don't know. But that's the challenge I see right in there, to how we use this. Because to this point, up until we just got, I think that Cannon Valley Trail sign probably just came in last year, maybe? It hasn't been there that long. And that was, I think, a long-term conversation with MINDOT, just to get that, so...
It's easy to blow by 19 if you're not paying attention.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, therein lies your second challenge if you choose to accept it. Let me know. That's all I've got.
Whether they're moving into the hospital, looks like they're getting pretty close. I took a tour today, this afternoon, since I got off. I'm working finally early.
Yeah, when I was at the doctor last week, the open house is what, the 25th? And they said the week after that, they're moving in.
Let me say something like August 4th, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, the hospital owner, or something like that.
So, it's getting close. Getting close.
Well, then they must be planning on having most of that interchange done now.
Yes.
Well, I'm just guessing.
I'm most worried about 318th Street and that's, I think they're going to pave that on Wednesday. Starting to pave on Wednesday.
That'll be done, too.
Which one is 318th?
Right by John Deere.
Oh, okay.
That's going to be paved Wednesday, I hope.
Oh, back to where the county road?
Back to the county, yeah, back to the county.
We've got a long ways to go on that.
But, you know, most people in town will be using that.
Well, people in town, well... People in town probably won't try going up to the, all the turnabouts to get there.
Just walk up to 318th, up and over.
Yeah.
Put out my over there.
Yeah, yeah, turn right there.
Well, I saw it. Looked like they had all that curb and gutter put in all the way along that stretch.
Not on 318th, they just got that little bit on the Mayo property part.
We got some curb up, curb up here.
Well, it's just...
Oh, no, 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 I mean back.
No, the...
I mean where they got the county road coming through.
Over here.
They've got that, they've got that pretty well ready to go.
Yeah, in here, yeah.
Want a lesson in signage?
All the way up, all the way up to 25.
Want a lesson in signage, look at what Mayo does.
Yes. Yeah, I...
And Mayo has a little more pull than we do.
Yeah, I think, again, from town to expect that people visiting the hospital are going to do this.
I don't think so.
Versus this?
Well, and probably, depending on which part of town, if they're coming, I suppose it'll depend on when they actually complete that next leg over to 19.
Right, yeah.
But people from that side of town, they might just skip the downtown if they got to get there.
That will be the most efficient way, at least coming from east side.
From the high school to get to the hospital.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The high school or the elementary school.
Yeah. So, they're coming. It's getting close.
We'll have a real heli port.
Yeah, they got the passport.
Yeah, I saw that.
Have to license by the state. When I started, there was helipad in at Ramsey and at the University of Minnesota. And that was pretty much it. Used to land in the streets.
Because we're in Goodview County.
What's that?
Your health insurance in Goodview County is the highest in the state, or highest in the country, excuse me.
Our health insurance is?
If you live in the southeast part of the state, live or work in the southeast part of the state, yeah, they just did a study on it. Goodview County was number one in cost. But if you go a mile up the road and you work in Dakota County...
Dakota County, different.
It's a lot more expensive.
More competition.
Probably a bigger pool.
System issue is what it is, but...
Well, but it creates a problem, well, not so much for planning commission, media and stuff, and we need to, because we see it was helped once. You want your park with headquarters, or maybe with Bobby Carlos House or something.
Well, you know, anywhere in that industrial park is probably okay, isn't it?
You've got to be across the line.
Got to go past 280th.
Yeah.
North at 280th, got it. You got any other planning commission member comments, questions?
How do we end up on the old street, they think, how is that around Cannon Falls? There, I haven't been by there.
We've issued a building permit for the roof. That's been redone.
Yeah.
I haven't heard from Oji that he's moved in yet. So, they're, yeah, they're moving forward.
They weren't moved.
Yeah, yeah.
Were they going to take the old house on the corner down then?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And that's going to be basically the parking lot?
Well, at this point, they have identified it as such, but, yeah, but the house will be gone and we'll have that additional land in for whatever. But they'll park it on the east side, too.
Are we getting any other building permits, new houses or anything?
Just, I think number seven is about ready to come in.
Great.
So, yeah, we're getting some single-family homes this year. Got a revised grading plan from up on Mensings, on Hinch's property, where they removed all the fill. That came in last week. There's 13 lots up there. And we're waiting for final agreements with Greg Jablonsky, who owns the property to the east. But it looks like they're going to come to a cooperative agreement there. So, the 13 lots and the original plat will be available for building this year. We'll do some more grading, some more equipment out there. Revised grading plan, I'm sure it will be approved, so 13 lots out there. Final plat for Glenn Mulley, who hasn't come in yet. You've approved it, council's approved it. It's in the process of being reviewed, I think, by at least the Hady County engineer or county surveyor. As soon as she signs off on it, I'm sure we'll see a Mylar copy. We'll make arrangements for Dan to sign that and get that filed.
And anything on the county on the road?
I haven't heard anything more since they had that meeting, so, haven't heard.
Okay.
I know that Dakota County is setting up a meeting probably September-ish to another community meeting on the County 86 plan. So, we'll let you know when that happens, with the vice of two.
Was that 86, was that something they were starting this year then?
Next year.
Next year, yeah, yeah. Engineering now and planning.
It's probably better that way, anyway. Let them finish this one down here first. Yeah, one overpass down is enough. Well, then we'll have three.
Number nine, yeah, number nine's in the process of getting...
Oh, they got a lot of grading done out there.
They're going really fast on it.
They got...
Footings right now, yeah.
They got all the stormwater ponds and stuff done up.
The center pillars up out there, yeah.
Yeah.
They're doing the east side pad now.
The east side of what?
The footing for the east side for number nine bridge.
Yeah, yeah, they're going fast. They're really moving.
It looks like the on and off on the east side looks like it's pretty much great to grade other than putting maybe rock down on top of it.
I don't think there's...
They look pretty well done.
Yeah, and I don't think there's any question, there just seems to be a lot more traffic on 52. Not just on the weekends.
Yeah.
All the time, man.
All the time, it's moving.
Well, yeah, 52 has been moving a lot faster ever since that speed limit went up to 65. But when they did that, I don't even think they added any spot for getting going faster or slowing down. I don't think they did.
Pedal as fast as you can, man.
No, or slowing, slowing... No, or slowing, slowing down. I don't think they added any more feet.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't think they did.
Got to put some new brakes on that car of yours.
Anybody else have anything? That brings us to number nine on the agenda here, which is adjourned. I've got a motion by Mr. Price.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hemma. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Everything in the minutes tonight. Are you guys motion definite?